I call the Monday, October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Zenzki?
Here.
You're not?
Here.
Anurkun? Here. Craft? Here. Lamb? Here.
Okay, can we please staff the questions? I apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Okay, we always start off by reading our mission and our vision statements. And our mission statement is we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. Our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through our strategic planning process and tangible results. And I welcome all of you to this board meeting. We're happy to see you all here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
I'll, a roll call, please.
If I may, just to add real quick, we did an executive session to the agenda hearing prior to the meeting started. But it was after the agenda was printed and was posted in the back of the meeting here. So if anyone has an agenda in front of you, we did add the executive session very yet. With that being said, calling roll Craft?
Yes.
Anurkun?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Zenzki?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so this brings us to our recognitions and informative reports. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Dutton.
Thank you. As our board president mentioned a moment ago, welcome to our meeting this evening. We have some parents and some students here with us. And just to, so you guys know, this, it's like a highlight for us. A board meeting is exactly that. It's where the school board of education does their business publicly. So a lot of times we're going through recommendations and, and, and different types of or the logistics of running a school district. So when we get students and families here, it's a treat for us to be able to kind of remind us of, of why we do what we do in our roles up here. So we are really grateful that all of you were able to take time out of your evening to come and visit us. For this evening, we had scheduled having our students come in who were, have been recognized with national merit. And we have Rob Woods here, who is the, the principal, like to call you up to the podium. And I know everybody can't be here tonight, but I know you'll recognize those who weren't able to attend. So at this point, I just want to turn it over to you.
All right, thanks. All right, if you want to join me. So is there coming up here? I'm going to tell you a little bit about national merit. So the National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in nineteen fifty five. Approximately three point six million high school students enter the program each year. Our WHS students took the test in their junior year, and when they take it, they enter into the National Merit Scholarship Program with the PSAT and MSQT, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test on Fall Test Day. So we had fifteen students, fifteen qualify for national merit recognition. We had eight National Merit Commended Scholars and seven National Merit Semi-Finalists. So College Board provides every principal with statistics on their semifinalists. And with our large number, we are in the top ten percent in state for qualifiers. It's the most I've ever had in thirteen years of being a high school administrator. We had more semifinalists than any school in our conference, and only three schools in the extended greater Cleveland area had more than us. Did a little research this morning. This one's my favorite. We also had more semifinalists than our private school counterparts. Participating in the National Merit Scholarship Program gives our students the opportunity to not only receive national recognition, and it's funny, Mr. Hopkins' son is a National Merit Semi-Finalist, and I hope you don't mind, but even we were talking, you, you get national, I mean, all of a sudden, all eyes on you from colleges, universities. It's, it's an enormous academic achievement. And they're eligible, or semifinalists are eligible for over three hundred million dollars of National Merit Awards. So I'd like to congratulate the following eight students who scored in the top five percent in the country and received the recognition of a National Merit Commended Scholar. So we have Risha Bronch on with us today. Darius Scotts and Bernadette Slairey. Those were National Merit Commended Scholars. Ashton today was Mohammed Asse, Shri Abangor, Harman Busek, Quentin Drake, and Kavya Bell. And then seven of our students were among the top scorers in the state and among the top one percent in the country. And so I'd like to congratulate the following students who are named National Merit Semi-Finalists, and then they will continue on in the selection process to have an opportunity at the over three hundred million dollars in scholarship potential. And then we have Sarah Alamad with us today, Luke Malickian, Ashley Scream, Summer Scream, and then Martin Bella, Manya Tandon, and Connor Tian couldn't be with us today. So these are your National Merits Semifinalists and Commended Scholars.
Well, at this point now, we can have a little bit of a conversation here. So if any of the board members have any questions or anything you'd like to talk about, please feel free.
I just have to say first, I'm just totally in awe of your achievements. Lot of hard work, I'm sure, went through, you know, your, your past school years and we're very proud of you, but I, you should also be very proud of yourselves for your accomplishments. That's the main thing. So congratulations to you and good luck for years to come.
What, what makes you want to succeed as academics?
Always the money.
What's been your favorite activity? And Wesley, I know you all have had a plethora of things that you've been involved with, but which is your one? Daria, we're going to start with you since I know you first.
Well, I'm the president of the WHBS TV Club, and we make the Friday morning news, and I really enjoy it.
And that's, that's grown a lot, too. The, the WHBS, just over the past, I'd say, four years, it's now, you're going multiple days. Are you almost at three days a week or two days a week?
Yeah, we're three days a week now.
Yeah, you guys have really grown that. I'm sorry, you were going to say?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Mine's a little bit less academic, but mostly like varsity sports, I think, like cross country interact. That is my favorite things I've done. Well, that's cool. And they're not things that I expected to participate in, but I just have had a lot of great memories participating in sports, so.
This is a very surgical twin answer, but I would have to say the same. It's just been like a really nice, like support outside of like academics, and it's been like a way to connect with students and other grades that I wouldn't normally get, so.
I'd have to say student council. I've been our class president for four years now, and I think, I don't know, I think the group, the group that we have, like the tradition we have every year, I'm kind of sad to see that all ending this year. Like every time we do like Halloween Fun Night at the school, this is our last one. I mean, it's kind of sad, but I'm excited to see how things go. Students like from graduation, other student council things. Yeah, it's okay.
I'd have to say probably D-Monets and band. I love to perform like the marching band on Friday nights and going to OMAA state contests or the district end state contests for many, it's always been so much fun.
For me, I would say it's probably music, so orchestra, band, jazz. They're all really fun. I can kind of turn my head off and just let my fingers move.
Now, Luke's being modest. He plays a mean bass for the show choir. I heard him on Saturday. Did amazing jobs.
So for me, it's size look good. Size look good is a pretty tight group of like very driven people, and it's just a lot of so we're like pretty high achievement, like us, each one's the competition.
So what are your future short-term plans at least? I'll start with this one. Oh, you got Dari back there, too. Yeah, I can't see.
Yeah, sorry. I'm kind of hiding behind a pole.
So I'm planning to go to college for four years for computer science.
Same old college for four years, probably more of biology or bio major.
College for four years, probably a bio major, but I also see myself being very low.
I also want to do four years, hoping to major in neuroscience, maybe double major in sociology. College for four years, computer science.
Before your college, need to figure out my major in the next like two days.
College for years, and I'm thinking of doing aerospace engineering.
And I'm sure you'll stay involved in activities in your colleges, too, because what you do.
Well, I think that's a great thing, too. And, and if you're involved a lot in high school, and then you go and you're involved a lot in your university, I think it just, it builds on that experience because, like you said, there's the academic part, but then you have the other parts that feed you so much, too, and some things where you can turn your brain off and, and kind of just be involved. So hopefully you do that.
So I think what's cool about this group and this, this whole concept is that this is only half your group. There's another half that couldn't make it tonight, but this isn't a test that they prepared for. You know, they're, they're up here, you know, they got this test. It's awesome. It, it truly shows like the academic achievements as a whole and the well-roundedness. And I could almost give emotion like your principal. Just the, the pride, you know, of these kids and how hard they work and all the extracurriculars that you hear, you know, you've heard them say about all the fun stuff that they like to do outside of school. Yet they performed awesome on some of these assessments, so truly blessed to hear that, Wesley.
Yes, and don't worry about picking your major within two days because kids change their majors a lot in college, so no pressure on you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Very good.
Welcome to stay, but please don't feel like you have to. I'm sure you have other things you'd be doing tonight, like picking a major. Thank you for coming.
Okay, and Dr. Dutton, we'll continue on with the superintendent's report.
Great. So I'm going to just kind of piggyback off their presentation. I like to keep it a little bit shorter when we have a presentation like that with students coming in, but one of them even mentioned the Halloween Fun Night. When you look at just since our last board meeting, a lot of activities happening. There was the trunk or treat that happened on Friday at the elementary school, Halloween Fun Nights. Our boys soccer team actually won the district and will be playing, we're here on Wednesday. So they're advancing well in the playoffs. So a lot of really good things happening in the district in regard to the agenda this evening and my recommendations. The directors covered the majority of the recommendations under my section there. The one that I did put on that I had sent is the memorandum of, of understanding between the Westlake City Schools and the city of Westlake in regard to school resource officers. If you take time and look at that, really what that is is that's structured in place when you have, are having people who work for another entity like the city of Westlake come and actually perform duties inside your school in your district. It's nice to have the parameters laid out. Like, so for example, it, it's, it's like when you buy a car, what, you know, what we do and what you do, you know, and we owe and you owe. And, and we're in that relationship, we provide a certain area with the telephone. We expect certain responsibilities from them. And then on the other side, the police department will be responsible for things like their vehicle, uniforms, training, and that sort of thing as well. So it's nice to lay all those things out. Now, we are on, I remember it was a two or three-year cycle. I'd have to look at it again. I think it's a two, is it a two-year cycle that I have in there? And it's a two-year cycle. We've done this two other times, and, and this is part of the requirements of being able to have school resource officer in schools. And so that's really the structure of what it is. It really hasn't changed. I think I, I pointed out a couple areas in which it did. I think the hourly rate went up a little bit. And I think there were a couple of typos that are fixed and, and, and within there, but other than that, there really isn't significant changes to that. And I can answer questions about it when, when we go to, when I recommend that it be approved. But other than that, in my superintendent recommendations, I don't see any other ones that I would really need to go through individually at this point, but we can ask questions later. So that's really all I had for my report. Happy to pass it on to our treasurer.
Okay. Still Hopkins.
Thank you. Really, tonight, I, I have no formal report. I'll be doing the five-year forecast in our November meeting. So that'll be coming up here, and I'll need to schedule a time with people who are working with BFF Finance to go over that before I prepare the meeting, but beyond that, I just have my items that will go over when we get to there.
Would you remind me after the meeting, I got a, a, a letter that we're supposed to fill out for the auditor or something?
Yes, we're in the middle of audit right now. They send out, it's a frac, a, a questionnaire, a fraud reporting, and a questionnaire that they send out. So I'm happy to.
So I can't figure out, I can't do it online. Wasn't able to. Maybe it's just if my eye, maybe I'm in red going.
Superintendent and board president.
Print copies for you. Typically, they'll do board president. I know they do so, they do measure. This year, they sent one to our payroll manager. They can, they'll randomly write. They'll send it out how they want to. Send it out, so.
I feel like last year we all had to do one. I think we did.
I, I don't recall offhand.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's all. So one thing I've forgotten in my report, I apologize, Dave Kosfar. I'd like to just recognize him for a moment. This is his final board of education meeting with us. He'll be retiring on November twenty first, twenty second?
Twenty second.
Twenty second. Will be his, his last day with the district. It is, I, I gotta say that, you know, it, it's going to be a tough one. We're very confident in Adam. But the level of, I don't want, not only institutional knowledge, but the experience in regard to just being, having, knowing how to handle a lot of the situations that come up in his office. He's incredible at it, and a lot of times it seems effortless. But it's a great balance of his demeanor. He's very like, he'll, he'll, he's very selfless in how he handles it, and he's not the kind of person who likes to push himself out front. He's usually a fixer, you know, as things need to get resolved. So his experience, his depth of knowledge, the way he handles things, Adam's going to have big shoes to fill. So I know this is really our, we're going to do more internally, I think, for him before he leaves, but with this being his, his last board meeting, I, I really have a hard time not at least mentioning him and, and how much he's meant to us. Now, Dave, I don't know if you want to come, come on up and say.
And you will tell us about all those other things that are going on, right?
Yeah, we want to, we want to, a different type of.
Are you going to be down in Columbus?
He is. Oh, good. He will be with us there. But this is all, this is the last thing that, this is the last time he'll be on the owl camera.
Did you see the big smile on his face when you said this is his last board?
He loves this.
Maybe we'll have another meeting just to help.
The twenty first, I think we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Sad of my forecast, well, it's not.
Or maybe we'll start a new building project.
Oh, no.
Which, by the way, how many of those have you been a part of here?
Oh, I've been a part of three, three new buildings and.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak up?
Yeah, I've been a part of three, three new buildings here, and I had one new building in Worcester and two renovations, sir.
I have, I have to say, I mean, we will miss you, and, and we've really enjoyed working with you and, and whenever I would get the calls, whenever there was a, a storm and the trees would go down over, under the center, they'd call me. I don't know why. A call right away to David Mann, it's, it's handled immediately, and I just appreciated the the, the quickness and your professionalism, you know, and we'll miss you.
We'd still call.
No, we would.
When the next, when I get my next call about a tree going down in their yard.
I'll, I'll watch. Well, we, we of course love you in the district, and you know the community loves you as well. I think about with all of those projects and, and residents have questions or complaints, or they want to talk about something, and you know, people love when you show up at their door and really carry them through the process and make them feel comfortable with it, so they're going to miss you, too.
Thank you. Ten years, right? Close to it. Twelve, yes, twelve, yeah.
All right, sorry, just wanted to add that.
No, I, I'm glad you did. Okay, so that brings us to the first hearing of the public. So if anyone wants to come forward and speak, seeing no one, we'll move on. We need to approve the minutes from our regular meeting of September twenty third. So if there are any additions or corrections at all, okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 Okay, minutes approved. And then that brings us to the library. You want to introduce?
Sure. And I, yeah, what I'm, I'm not going to explain it because Andrew usually does when he gets up, but we do have Andrew Mingles, the, the director of our wonderful Porter Public Library and pretty much a man who's involved in every committee in the city of Westlake and outside of it, in the neighborhood.
Yeah. But if I may be allowed, very quickly, as a citizen of Westlake, resident, to thank Dave for his service as well. I've had the opportunity to work with Dave over the years in my professional capacity, but my kids all came through the district and have always appreciated how hard Dave works and everything he said was spot on. So congratulations, Dave, and enjoy your retirement. Yes, thank you. Yes, the library is a fantastic, wonderful place, and part of that is because of our wonderful board of trustees. And for those who may be listening or not aware, Westlake Porter Public Library is an independent library, and it is a school district library. What that means is that the school district does have a little bit of oversight of the library mainly in two areas, and one of those areas is when we go on the ballot or need to be on the ballot for our levy, the school board must, or shall, it's not may, but shall, put us on the ballot as our taxing authority. And it was just a way for the state not to have too many taxing authorities. Some libraries fall underneath the school district. So that's one area, and the other area is the ultimate appointment of library trustees. The library typically runs its own recruitment and interviewing process for trustees. Over the last number of years, we've had a turnover of a new trustee member each year for a number of years, but every once in a while, a trustee says, I've had so much fun. I'd like to stay on for another term. And in this particular case, Bob Plants, whose term ends in December, has indicated to the rest of the board that he would like to stay on another term. So the library board actually takes a vote, and they voted that they would like to see Bob retained on the board. So we forwarded that over to the school board for their approval of reappointing Bob for another seven-year term. Bob Plants is just one of the most amazing trustees that you can imagine. Bob is somebody who is involved very heavily in the community in other ways besides the library, but also at the library very, very involved. He makes it a point to know all the staff members. He makes it a point to attend library events and be involved. We are particularly wanting Bob to renew because of his experience with library funding. And as we, the uncertainty of state funding with what's known as the Public Library Fund, which has evolved over the years, Bob's the only trustee we have left that has been through that long process of, of sort of fighting for our share of, of state dollars. And with this next biennial budget coming up, there's a lot on the line. And Bob's experience will be very helpful as we go to legislature and, and make our ask for library funding next year. So that's some of the reasons that we hope that you will approve Bob for another tenure, another term as trustee.
You know how many years he's done it? He's been on quite a while, hasn't he?
He has done three terms. This would, this would be four.
Okay.
Which is very uncommon and very rare. Like most, most people joining the library board, it used to be in the old days, people would stay on for very long. Tom Fox was on the board for thirty years. But now it's usually people do a term and then they, they move on. But Bob has been so integral to the library, he has stayed for multiple terms.
You had mentioned that Bob Plants is the only one in this particular area. Who, who will be next that will learn that skill and, and do that for the library?
Well, we have a couple, Jason Donley is somebody who has served two terms on the board, so he, he brings a lot of that follow-up knowledge as well. And Elizabeth Shee is another board member who has served, she has one more year on the board, so she'll be very helpful. She's a former mayor of Vermillion, so she understands public policy very well. So we do have a little bit of depth, but we also have some three, three newer trustees who went on a year or two, and they're still learning the ropes because there's a lot to learn. It's, it's very confusing about our state funding versus our local funding and so forth. So, but Peter Schindler and Lauren Golick are two of our newer trustees. They're going to be fantastic over the next several years.
Thank you.
So we we need to motion?
Yes. We will.
I need to move to per, to approve God egg.
Second.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Thanks, Paul.
I've known Bob for over forty years. He's a really good guy. Very nice man.
He is a prince of, he really is.
Okay, roll call, please.
This to approve resolution five, the approval of library trustee. You're not?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Anurkun?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Zenzki?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Frankel. So thank you. And if I may, part with one last comment about the library not related to this business was, today, if you've been at the library earlier, you would have seen several groups of students that came from Westlake Elementary School that walked along that path that we connected to the schools. They came in, they were touring around the library. It is just one of the most joyful sights to see all these kids being able to come over and use the, the public library. So we thank, we're thankful for that partnership with the school and wonderful things that are happening. So thank you all for your time.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins, treasurer's recommendations.
Thank you. For the board tonight, I have four recommendations. The first one is some vet annals. If you've got questions about it, please let me know. The second one I have is a substitute wage. So our our copy room, we've gone through some changes to our copy room. Our longtime copy person, Larry Madison, had been there for a number of years, had retired at the end of last school year. We worked through negotiations and. We worked through negotiations and redesigned the position to be both the copy room and the pony delivery driver, the the pony being. Going from building to building, taking uh mail around the district or or the uh product of the copy room as well. Um, the person we had hired um recently left the district. So uh we have the opening uh right now, the vacant position. We've uh. Posted it, we're in the middle of doing some interviews on it, we hope to fill it soon, but in the time being, uh, we did ask Larry to come back. And uh fill in for us, at least in the copy part of it. Um, and so he's been coming in on a somewhat uh daily basis. Or at least for a few hours each day to take care of the copying needs for the district. So we're very appreciative of that, but we don't have a. Uh, substitute wage for that. So I'm I am asking the board to approve a substitute wage uh for that copy. Uh, room pony driver opposition. So that's in front of you. And then uh C and D. Um, I am asking uh for board approval uh to make some changes on the salary uh schedules for our Project Link program. Um, first and foremost, um, I failed to bring this to the board. Uh, earlier in the year when all of the other uh raises were going into effect, I I think that um. As Dr. Gag and I and I had spoke about it, we're very, very blessed in the district with Project Link. Project Link, for those who don't know, is our before school and after school program. Um, categorized as a latch key program. And so we uh uh run this uh before school, after school program. But it's far more than that. Uh, Mr. Waters, our coordinator, uh, director of Project Link, does a phenomenal program, a program. Uh, including Camp Link over the summer enrichment programs. It really is a top top notch program. Um, it runs so well uh that as Dr. Gag and I were speaking, sometimes we overlook it. And so uh when we were doing all the other raises uh back in July and August uh throughout the entire district. Uh, certified, classified, admin exempt, uh, I failed to put in uh. Project Link, so I apologize to our uh Project Link employees and I do ask that the board uh uh would approve these two. Uh resolutions with Link. Uh, this brings it in line with the raises that have been given uh through the uh rest of the district. Uh, so uh for that type of position. Uh, so uh. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer that, but those are my four resolutions. I'm happy to combine all four, so please.
Okay, um, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendation six A through sixteen?
So, second.
Any uh questions or discussion? Thank you for your email uh that you sent out because I thought that was very uh. I mean, you really explained it well.
It it's an excellent program. Um, Mr. Waters does a phenomenal job with the program. Um, you know, I I'll put Dr. Goggan on the spot here. Uh, you know, Dr. Goggan deals with a lot of things. Uh, each day and unfortunately, he deals with a lot of complaints and when was the last complaint you had on Project Link?
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
And and I think that's part of it and that's something that that we talked about is, you know, you have your administrators, you have your um. Labor unions and you have that and then you have link and they just do their thing, you know, and. And and I and and they they don't come up and say, hey, by the way, we didn't get that too. They just keep going, you know, and 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 uh. So, yeah, that's why we really thought it was important to get this.
I'm glad you're doing that.
Well, he's being retroactive to the. So there are the two resolutions, I'm I'm number C, you're on, sorry, letter C. Uh, those are for your uh uh site coordinators um and your assistant coordinator. Uh, those are, I'm asking the board to go back to August first, they started the contract here. Um, the uh. Project Link instructors, uh, the hourly wage there, uh, that's actually gonna would go into effect in January first. That's in consultation with Mr. Waters. Most of our uh instructors are all used uh during the summer or break times. Uh, when uh not during the normal before school, after school program. So we're already beyond the use of most of those instructors. Thank you.
Looking at the then announced, College Now is paid for by grant, if I remember correctly.
Is it this year that we put it under as a title two? Title four, I'm sorry. Okay, so title four, yes. We we were paying for it uh through S R funds and then this year they were able to use title.
And I do know our parents very much do appreciate the College Now program. They find it incredibly helpful with navigating the entire college financially classes.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Approved treasure recommendation six A through D, Benutin?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Lamb, yes. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, adapted that.
Great. I'll start off with seven A and I always like to read this separately. Um, we do have uh two donations to acknowledge. Michael Sarna donating five hundred dollars to the Frank Sarna Memorial Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. Um, and Westlake Music Booster, so. President here, uh donated the following to the district. Uh, band uniforms for Westlake High School totaling eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety eight dollars. Tenor saxophone for Westlake High School in the amount of two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. A piccolo valued at one thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, an oboe for Dover Intermediate School. For one thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. Symbol line for Westlake High School in the amount of three thousand four hundred and three dollars. That's incredible. When you tally up the what they just donated there, that's some uh uh great equipment for our our students and the music program. Um, just kind of going through, I will touch on B and and so in my recommendation is where. Uh, the salary adjustment for the Project Link, uh, project and camp link coordinator, Mike Waters, is listed. Um, and you know, another thing, just thinking for a second, um. Mike Waters has been with the Westlake City Schools for twenty, how many years?
Since nineteen ninety eight.
Okay. So he's been, you know, he's been a mainstay here for a long, long time and when we were talking, I. Kind of surprised me how long he was, he has been here, so just like to point that out.
I'm surprised too, I didn't.
Yeah.
Ninety eight.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Didn't he attend Westlake this one?
I didn't think so. I didn't think so, but. But you know what, for tonight, yeah. You gotta like that. That's right, he's been here long enough here. And then uh those are the other ones. And if you wanna, if you wanna, um, uh, if you have any open for discussion on the other recommendations, but I would ask. That recommendations, seven A, seven B and seven C, if we can keep those three separate, the gifts. And then the employment of an administrator and then uh the M O U. But I don't, if if you guys are okay with it, I don't see any reason why we can't combine seven D through seven R. That would be my request of the recommendations.
Okay, is there a motion to approve su- superintendent's recommendation seven A, a resolution to accept gifts and donations? Did you get that chat?
I did.
Okay. Uh, a big thank you to all of our very generous uh donors. Uh, any other uh que- uh comments or discussion?
Other than the uh Westlake Music Booster does an outstanding job and uh I had the opportunity to volunteer and. Do the hot dogs at the uh concession stand, so.
Okay.
You guys are more than happy to join me next year.
I mean.
I bet you had fun.
It was actually fun.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Approved seven A, Fanukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation seven B, which is to approve employment of administrative staff members?
The move.
Second. Uh, questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
First seven B, Fanukin?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation seven C, which is to approve the M O U between. The Westlake uh city schools and the city of Westlake.
The move, second.
Uh, questions or discussion about that?
Well, I'd like to uh acknowledge Dr. Goggan and Rested Community that there's a very strong relationship with the city and the schools. Uh, ten years ago. It was not nearly what it is today. So you built a very solid bridge. Of concrete. That's wrong. Uh, so it's 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 been a great relationship with them since. Your tenure.
It started coming together, I think, before that. It I I, yeah, and. But it it has been nice and Mayor Clough has been wonderful, City Council's been wonderful, Chief Belozer. I brag about him to other superintendents uh on how innovative he is and how involved he is and we're very, very lucky.
Don't brag too much, they might try and steal it.
Oh, yeah, maybe, but.
Relationship with the city is great when it comes specifically to S R O, that um communication that you have, that open dialogue you have. Uh, with uh. Uh, chief and mayor and the S R O is um, it it's always helpful. We have questions. Uh, things come up uh just to have that conversation, so thank you.
Absolutely, sure. I'd just like to add that I believe today is National Purge Response Day, so it's a feeling that we're seeing this today. And we're very fortunate to have them as a part of our schools.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Approved seven C, Fanukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations seven D through seven R?
So move.
Second. Okay, questions or discussion on any of them?
It's always nice to see the field trips. The uh coral group, uh coral department is going to New York this spring.
Yes, I have to vote for that one, we see Butler's gonna.
You're going for that?
I already signed up.
Lucky you. And just so people know that the field trips are funded uh uh by the attendees.
I can attest to that.
Yes.
No free trips for the chaperones either.
Okay, anyone else?
I I just wanted to say that I had a couple of questions uh regarding these items, or a couple of these items. Uh, Dr. Goggan was very helpful today, so thank you.
One of them, actually, one of the questions I thought was a good one, was in letter P, um, well, actually, no, there was. Uh, in regard, in regard to some uh volunteers for Camp New Hop. Now, obviously, Camp New Hop, New Hop already happened. Um, but when, depending on where things fall, um, I'll I'll approve it, like, you know, obviously, the we. The, all of the volunteers were background checked and went through everything and so I did approve it, but even though it's after the fact, we still need to make sure it's. Which was a really good question by Mr. Lamb.
Okay, anyone else? Hey, roll call, please.
Approved seven B through seven R. Fanukin?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Craft, yes. Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and that brings us to our second hearing of the public. Anyone wants to come forward?
Mr. Coastfar.
Okay, seeing no one, uh, that brings us to board comments.
I have a few comments and. Uh, thank you for including us on the Google Calendar. I think that's gonna be an excellent way for us to keep in touch. Pops up on our phones and we'll know about things that are coming up, so thank you. Uh, Ms. Musselman and Mr. Wilson, I know you're heading over to Westshore soon and I know things are really changing there. Quite a bit with the addition of programs, et cetera, so we're looking forward to that for the fourth one that comes our way, so thank you, thank you for that. Um. Just wanted to mention some things that happened some time ago but worth mentioning. Uh, the board had the opportunity to participate and contribute to the. Twenty twenty four University Hospitals Annual Fundraiser and Community Advocacy Gathering. Uh, with community leaders, that Dr. Goggan was a part of that. And the board also participated and contributed to the twenty twenty four Westlake Bay Village Rotary Annual Fundraiser. With other community leaders, uh, Dr. Goggan was a part of that, Mr. Major was a part of that, Principal Woods was a part of that. Principal Meshka was a part of that, uh, Principal Rojack was a part of that and also Director Ranala was a part of that, so it was. Lot of fun to see them uh en- engaging in that uh activity, helping out the uh community. Uh, Westlake Educational Foundation um met for its um uh grant season. And awarding grants to various um. Uh, various teachers in the district, and then Mr. Hopkins and Dr. Goggan are a part of that too. I also had a question, this came up uh during uh the Westlake Educational Foundation. It's just a a brief update when it comes to uh the addition onto D I S. The entryway, any any thoughts on that, uh, or any uh anything you may want to add in this meeting?
In regard to?
Uh, the entryway.
The the purpose or the? So where we are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, uh, so uh, uh, Mr. House and I, um, we did get the floor plans out for the building. Um, we started gathering all the data um for the types of systems that will need to be altered. Uh, including heating, um, uh, security access. Um, we're putting together, um, right now it's in rough draft, a proposal. Um, it's a scope review basically that we could give to contractors and architects and engineers to show them what we're looking for. None of it will give a detail of what the building will look like on the outside, but it will give that basic information about what we need. Inside to make it operational to us. We expect to finish up with that sometime here around the middle of November. Um, and then it will go uh to um uh uh Dr. Goggins and Mr. Hopkins just for a review. Prior to sending it out for.
Awesome. I think, you know, time timeline wise, we're looking at, well, a couple of things, we're looking, um. We're seeking legal advice, we're most likely leaning towards doing a design build project. Where we're able to work with a construction company uh who will design it and then also build it. Uh, compared to formal uh uh multiple prime bid that that, you know, uh, things are, things are not. Um. There's several different ways you can do construction projects. Most recently, our elementary school was built under uh the. Construction manager at risk uh process, but our wall fields were built under design though. So um, we we use different things when it's appropriate. We feel this would be most appropriate uh under design build. Um, but we are seeking legal advice to make sure that it's the proper way to do this. Additionally, our timeframe is, it's gonna be major construction. Uh, and it will affect the whole front of the building there, so we are targeting construction to start uh as soon as we can in the summer. So you will not see any uh changes in this school year. Uh, or I don't anticipate any changes this school year, but the project will be done over the summer, opening before next year.
Okay, for twenty twenty five.
Correct.
Do you have any idea about the size of it approximately? No, no, the set, the actual square footage of the structure itself.
We're we're looking to bump out that um the existing structure, probably a good ten to fifteen feet. So we want to get it to come out past the current door that goes into the office area from the courtyard. Um, if you were to take that, say, straight across, it would be all that square footage in there.
Okay.
Great. We also are looking at the archway of the front. Uh, we have some um. Foundational problems with that archway. Uh, as you walk into uh uh D I S, there's that arch that the brick arch.
Right.
Uh, we may have to remove that uh brick, brick archway because it is separate from the building and leaning, so um. You know, yeah, so we're, you know, we. So we'll have a completely new look at the front of D I S, try to integrate it as much as we can to the historical value of the building, but we would make some changes.
Okay, really dumb question. We can sell the bricks.
Oh, God.
This is a really dumb question, but since it's. An exterior, i- is it necessary to have heat?
Yeah, so so all of our vestibules and and going into buildings do have some sort of a a temperature control. Um, you'll want, it doesn't necessarily need to be air conditioned, but um from the winter because doors will be open. Um, letting uh the students in en masse, so you'll want to have some sort of a system in there. Right now, we currently have two heating um ventilators on each side of the doorways. To try to temper the air that blows in, so we look at something.
Interesting, okay. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you, thank you. Um, one other thought I know was.
It does. Thank you, thank you. Um one other thought, I know as we uh will be into twenty twenty-five soon, I believe there are two board members uh who have a a term that ends in twenty twenty-five. And as you think about that, um think 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 about what 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 the future is. And as I gave some thought to that, in particular, I gave some thought to potentially not running again. Uh seeking people out in the community uh that that may have an interest in the board. Uh similarly, when Dr. Stol- Stol uh stepped away, um reaching out to the community to to uh see, you know, what what interest and who might want to do that. And I just want to encourage my board members to think about that and um think about what your future plans are and um uh return the community if you have to, or get ready to run. So thank you.
I know, did you see the big smile, Mr. Coastbar? It's the last board meeting.
That's why I bring it up, give some thought to it.
I'll stay out as long as Todd's here.
You're on for a long ride, man.
One thing uh that I just want to mention out, since you talked about the calendar.
Yeah.
Uh an item, just to remind everyone again, um November eighth, the Veterans Recognition.
Yes.
At uh Westlake Elementary School from nineteen AM. If you haven't been to that.
I'm going.
Did you ever miss it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's really nice. It's one of my
Yeah.
favorite things that I think.
It was very nice when the elementary.
Friday.
Friday.
Did it individually, but it was hard to to make them all, and and they did a wonderful job last year. They really get the kids involved and
And that reverse parade is really cool, as the veterans are leaving where
Yes.
the the kids are out cheering for them.
Yeah.
That's at nine?
Uh nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen to spend fifteen.
Um. Anything else? No.
I've got a couple of things here to touch upon. Um I just wanted to say that I enjoyed uh attending the joint meeting and uh, you know, uh at Rocky River, it was very informative, and it was great to uh hear and uh hear about everything that was going on at Columbus and getting the perspective of uh other school districts as to what's happening with them also. Um I think I mentioned earlier, uh went to the company Dean uh performance on Saturday evening at uh Strongsville High School, the Boot People Showcase. They're trying to play, yeah, trying to play it on Halloween, but it was really nice, and I know I'm biased, but uh I believe the company Dean sounded the best of all, but it was there. Um also, I I know that uh prom was mentioned earlier by a couple of our students uh from National Hunters Society, and they're already fund, the parents are already fundraising for the after prom, so attended a fundraiser for that, went to the choir uh presenter or choir show uh for my high school last Monday, sounded really good. It was great to walk in the parade with all of you guys, or no, we actually rode in the parade uh for homecoming. I thought that was really nice. And then uh the sports seasons are also coming to an end, and I just wanted to uh give a shout out to Nick Rinaldo and his staff for everything that they're doing on a nightly basis. It seems like he was at every single event that I was at, um whether it be volleyball or football or whatever, but I'm looking forward to the winter sports season, but wanted to, you know, give a shout out.
Um when you mentioned that um I just said a couple of uh heard a couple of comments about the um sound system or the uh, is it the scoreboard at the high school and during the volleyball games and that? Have you heard any?
I I saw some emails.
Malfunctions or something, and you're at the volleyball game, so have you noticed? Notice, okay. Have you, have you heard anything from either Mr. Woods or Mr. Manalo?
We.
That is malfunctioned, the scoreboard or the speaker system or whatever? Okay. Uh yeah, in the during volleyball games.
I mean, there's a lot of the lot of scoreboard when it comes to scores and stats and.
Yeah, I was thinking with basketball season coming up too, we don't want something that doesn't work in our gym, so. What?
There was a brief conversation by a new scoreboard.
In the gym?
Yeah.
A lot of times it's more user issues, because you have sometimes the students who are running scoreboards.
I think it's older also, so it's more labor intensive.
Sometimes it's a you and a it problem.
The flag, the flag is amazing.
Yeah, that's really.
Yeah.
We can look into that before the season starts, I know. I I did leave one thing out, uh Westlake Educational Foundation, Mr. Wilson is an enormous part of that, and uh the um the the work that he does with staff, the work that he does with the board is is pretty incredible. Uh really allows the Westlake Educational Foundation to to do so much, and he makes certain that that board too has an opportunity to see those grants um at work and in motion throughout the district as well. Uh uh the board itself is is very detail oriented. Uh we we like to process things, sometimes something that may seem to, it'll just take a minute or so, may take a a lot longer. And uh he is always there and always a part of those meetings and makes certain that that board uh gets all the information they need and it really makes it happen. So thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Do you know when they're going to announce the winners?
At the next uh board meeting in December.
Okay.
Yes.
December or yeah, did I say that? The next one is November one.
Uh right.
So and we only have one in December.
Yes.
So, okay, well, that'll be fun.
Yeah. Absolutely.
It's always good when uh the teachers come and explain their project. Anyone else?
A lot of great things happening in our district, I'll tell you what.
Sure. Um, okay, then uh board items. I think we've touched on mine, but I have no board items. At the moment. Um. So that brings up us up to a a journey, and we will adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment. Employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official, and no action will be taken. Do we need a, need a motion? We do, okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Uh roll call please.
To enter into executive session at six fifty-seven PM, Craft, yes. Um Benutken?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here now?
Yes.
Motion carries, you are in executive session.
Okay, so we are.